December meeting of the Anderson County Board of Education will come to order. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Instead of something good, we have something great tonight.
We have something great tonight. You're exactly right. We have the Anderson County, the Clinton High School Choir.
Yeah.
Anderson County Schools. I say that every day, Anderson County Schools. So everything I start says Anderson County Schools. Anderson County Schools, Clinton High School Choir.
That's right.
Yes.
Come on in.
Come right up in.
Can we go out there?
Yes.
Yeah.
We can out there.
Yep.
Let's go out there, Glenn.
Yeah.
That sound better.
Hello, everyone. We are the members of the Clinton High School Advanced Ensemble. We sing a wide variety of different choral works in a host of different arrangements and varieties. We are a traveling audition choir, only to any 10 through 12th graders. We have traveled around the world. We have traveled around Tennessee, seen a lot here in our own backyard, to going as far as Nashville. We've had multiple members make all east and all state honors choir. Tonight, we've prepared a few special pieces in the spirit of Christmas. But first, next Tuesday, we will be hosting our annual Christmas concert at Clinton High School's auditorium.
What time?
At six. We would love to see you all there. Our first piece we will be singing is called "When I Hear the Sounds of Christmas." When I Hear the Sounds of Christmas is a beautiful valley about the joys of Christmas time and the heart-blowing films that you see around this time of year. We really hope you enjoy "When I Hear the Sounds of Christmas."
(Singing) Part this special season that comes just once a year. So many things we cherish, so many we hold dear. The stockings on the mantel, the greetings of good cheer. The ravens of a fine tree, the music that we hear. Every fa la la la, every rum pum pum pum, every ring-a-ling-a-ling-dong-dee. When I hear the sounds of Christmas, I just want to sing. Every silvery bell, every joyful Noel, every sentimental Christmas song. When I hear the sounds of Christmas, I have to sing along. When you hear the carols. Silent night. Song outside your door. Holy night. And the Christmas music. All is good. Playing every song. All is bright when the snow is falling. And lights are on the tree. That's a time for singing, together you and me. Every fa la la la, every rum pum pum pum, every ring-a-ling-a-ling-dong-dee. When I hear the sounds of Christmas, I just want to sing. Every silvery bell, every joyful Noel, every sentimental Christmas song. When I hear the sounds of Christmas, I have to sing along. When I hear the sounds of Christmas, I have to sing along. Sing along.
Our next piece is called Noel Noel. This piece is about having so much joy and hope for the baby who was born. We're saved, and he's a gift from God. We really hope you enjoy Noel Noel.
(Singing) Joyfully we sing Noel Noel Noel. Spreading to the world the news we have to tell. Oh, he is born a babe, the newborn king. He has been born, glad tidings now we bring. Joyfully we sing Noel Noel Noel. God rest ye, that ye gentlemen, there's nothing you can say. Noel Noel. Remember Christ our Savior was born on Christmas day. To save a soul from sinners' wrong and evil. Noel Noel. Oh tidings of comfort and joy. Oh tidings of comfort and joy. Noel Noel Noel. Joyfully we sing Noel Noel Noel. Noel Noel Noel. Noel Noel. Noel Noel Noel. Sing Noel Noel. From God on him, the Father, a blessed angel came. And two certain shepherds brought tidings of the same. And that in Bethlehem was born a son of God by name. Oh tidings of comfort and joy. Comfort and joy. Oh tidings of comfort and joy. Noel Noel Noel.
Hello, Dr. Perry. How are you?
There he is.
Doing good, doing good.
Be careful not to get him called George.
No.
I said motion.
No. He's gonna get down.
And it's free, but donations. Donation's not my thing.
Oh, shoot. Eric Stotter. I just heard you. I have something for you. Would I have to bring it?
All right. Thank you to Mr. Bohannon and the Clinton High School chorus.
Good job.
Good job.
That was great. All right. I don't believe we have anyone to be heard tonight. Correct? Okay. Approval of the agenda, we do have, there's a, I think, is there a resolution at everybody's place?
No, I didn't. I just got it on here.
Oh, okay. There is a resolution to purchase the property adjacent to Andersonville Elementary School. We need to add that to the agenda under action items. So if you would, are there any other additions to the agenda? If you would approve that addition?
We approve the addition of landowners.
All right. Motion to approve the agenda with that one item added. Any other discussion? Not in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, no. That is done. Next item is the approval of consent agenda. The only thing I would point out is that it will now include the minutes of the previous month's meeting. So we'll be approving those, so we don't get in trouble in any way. So anything needs to be pulled off of the consent agenda for discussion? Not, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion, second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Not in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, no. That's done. There was no executive approval this month. Comments from the chair. I did put at your place the legislative agenda for TSBA for the coming year, and since there are only nine items on it, I thought I'd hit the highlights just for those who might be listening. But you'll remember last month, we elected people to go to the delegate's assembly at the TSBA conference, and so this was what we did. A lot of these items have to do with making it easier to become and remain a teacher. So one of those is funding the praxis, so that teachers can make themselves even more valuable by expanding their horizons a little bit. Options to hire teachers, students who still, who only need to complete their student teaching. So it allows them to be hired and do their student teaching while they're actually employed. So save a little bit of time. Again, these are things we're throwing out to the, to the assembly as priorities for the year. So there's still some things that need to be fleshed out. There's an option for military veterans to obtain occupational teaching license. Some of the military qualifications or training qualify them to teach certain things. So makes it a little easier to hire some retired military folks to teach. Then there's a request just to review the, all of the laws and such in the, in the code for anything that makes it more difficult to be a teacher, any kind of obstacle and things that are, that are out there. Of course, the third, fourth grade retention thing is a big deal, and most folks really want that to be decided among people who know the students best, not folks in Nashville. There was a resolution from Putnam County that wanted to have, conduct lotteries, lottery-type fundraisers for schools. So that was approved. I don't know where that'll go, but it allows, allows school systems the option of doing some.
Board of Education to conduct lottery.
Yeah, the Board of Education, that's what I, yeah, we're gonna conduct a lottery. So again, some of these just might become available for folks. There'll be options for that. A big emphasis on local control of schools. You know, some people think that our own, that nobody knows more about students in Anderson County than our own teachers and staff and administration and school board. So we believe that, and so we'd like to have more control, or at least retain the control that we're supposed to have for our schools. There was a, we're urging the General Assembly to use the TANA funds, the Temporary Assistance for Needy Family Funds, for costs related to funding programs that support social services. Also funding scholarships for special ed folks, people who are interested in going into special ed. That's, that was one of those that was making it easier to be a teacher. I think that's all of them, but I hit them all. I think I kind of jumped around. But anyway, that's the legislative agenda for the Tennessee School Boards Association. So some of them may never see the light of day, but some of them may. So that is all from the chair. We don't have any of our, either of our students here tonight.
No, I think, I think they're all busy.
They're busy. It must be December.
Yes.
So, well, then we can go right on into the director's report.
Okay. Get up, if you step up here. Doc?
Our, our first thing is, you know, so for the, I think the third or fourth year in a row, we do something every year, every month, and we recognize part of our staff, our custodians, our cafeteria workers, our teachers, our principals, our bus drivers, and all of that comes through a Utrust. And we went to Nashville in November, and we were awarded, says Utrust presents Anderson County Board of Education, the Best Appreciation Program in East Tennessee Award for 2022. And I'm going to give this to Mr. Scott because this is part of, we will hand this on the board.
There you go. But we know who is really responsible for that, and that's.
Pam Crawford. She is.
Absolutely.
Man was from Pam.
She does a great job for that.
Yes, she does.
She does. And that, that is the way we get our funding and for grants, and our grant funding this year was just a little over $60,000. So all the schools not only got $100 because we won, but all the schools will receive grant funding, and we've already sent that out for their number. And then we keep money back for us to do our celebrations with, and that's how they've been doing catering lunches and things like that this year. So it's really a great way to celebrate our staff. And like you say, Pam Crawford does an excellent job on that. We, we are gonna truly miss her when she decides that she's gonna retire at the end of this year, but I'm trying to make sure that she stays on for a long time.
Is it the end of this year?
At the end of the school year.
The school year, June.
End of the school year.
Oh, gosh, I'm on my way into another year.
No, it's, it's gonna be June, so.
Well, we need to tie her up.
Yes. Yep. One of the other things that I think is, is pretty good is that, as you have on your table, Anderson County football won the state title this last weekend, first time in school history, the first time in the history of our school district, and I think we've had a state winner in football, maybe way back in the early 30s, but I'm not sure. But we have had state championships in volleyball and other things like that, but this is the first time football. So we want to congratulate them. And on the 19th, which is a week from next Monday, at 6 o'clock at the Anderson County Courthouse, we will have a joint resolution recognizing the football team, and it'll be at 6 o'clock, and they will all be recognized there. So I've talked to them. They want to invite the board to be part of that and come on that night. So that's, that's on Monday night at 6 o'clock. That's the. A week from this month. It's a week from this coming Monday, yes, yes. Another thing is that Aunt Fairview Elementary School is one of the top 100 schools in the nation, and they have been recognized as an ESEA designated school. And that comes from, that's the Elementary and Secondary Educational Act, and they recognize schools for three things: for exceptional student performance and academic growth as determined by the state, closing the achievement gap for students in, in different subgroups, and excellence in serving special populations, homeless and migrant. And so we want to congratulate Fairview Elementary School. That's the only school in the state of Tennessee that won that award. And they will be going to a, in sometime, early in the year, they will be going to the ESA, the National ESEA Conference, and then at the state, the State Board of Education meeting in early next spring, they will be at that, and they'll be recognized. And we're gonna try our best to see if we can't figure out a way to get that whole staff to go down for that, for that day. So that's a pretty big deal that they are recognized for this. They, they have been having to do interviews, and they've done a video. I think Ryan's been helping them do some stuff to put it out. But, but that's the first time we know of anybody in East Tennessee that's, that's got this award. Pretty big thing. The other thing is, we have sent out a survey to our staff. We've been doing that for about three years, sent a survey out asking them things about what can we do to make Anderson County better, what can, what are some things we can take off their plate, how do, how do they can help us retain teachers and things like that. So we're working on that data, and we'll be bringing it back to you for your board retreat. And then in January, we, again, we will do focus groups, where we meet with every group of our, from our teachers to our custodians to our social workers, to our assistants, special ed teachers. We'll meet with all of them, and we'll ask them for input, and we'll get that input back from you. And also, we'll meet with our, our parent group, and we'll have input from them. So hopefully, we'll have a lot of good information when we come back in February. And one of the other things that I got today is one of the things that the state legislators are pushing from the tall side of it, is trying to increase the money that teachers get for their supplies. Right now, they get $200 a year, and so there's a bill that's going to be trying to move that to $500 a year. And so that would be really good if we could get that for our teachers. We still don't know about our test TESA funding. We were supposed to get a first look at it sometime in October and November, and now they say it's probably gonna be the end of January before they figure out. So hopefully, by the time we go to, again, our board retreat, we'll have some information on that. And last of all, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and hope y'all have a great time. It's been a great school year. Our staff, if you don't know, they have been, federal projects, IDEA, which is special ed, and CTE, and our SRF funds have all been going through federal monitoring at the same time this year. And we started, they, they have worked tirelessly for the last three months to get ready for it. Well, today started the actual talking to people, and we've done it online. So we met early this morning, and they've met with different schools throughout the day. They've met with Clinton High School, Fairview, ACCTC, Bryceville, and then tomorrow, they meet with the leadership again and go over those things. So we'll know about it, but I think so far, they've really had some great findings, that, that we're doing some, some excellent work. And then we'll get a report back the 1st of January, and we'll bring that to the board. So a lot of good things going on in Anderson County.
How many people did they bring in to visit?
They didn't bring them in. It's all done remotely this year. So, so we had, they had about eight people on the team, and they were, they, when they were talking to us, they were actually talking in one room. They were talking with the special ed at a school, and then they were talking about with the IDEA, I mean, with the federal programs at the Title I at the school at the same time. So a lot of teams being worked on. They also worked with our financial people, with Marcus and that area in there, Julie.
Dr. Perry, does the state fund the teachers' supplies?
They do right now, the $200 of them. So that's what they're hoping is the $500. We're, we're hoping that they don't just say that, hey, we want you to change it to 500, and they don't give us any more money.
Right, right.
That's usually the way things work out. And, and if you think about that, that would cost us about $189,000 to fund that unmandated, unfunded mandate if they do it. So we're hoping they add that money into that.
The $200 costs us something, though.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, they only pay for the teachers. They only pay for the teachers that.
Not everybody.
In the BEP. So we don't know how that, because there's not a number. With, with TESA, there's not a teacher number.
With TESA, we should get more, hopefully.
Yeah, it's a, it's a student-funded, it's student-funded instead of teacher-funded. So I don't know how that works, if they say, well, you should get every teacher, but I think what it'll be, you just get that money, and you have to do with it what you want. So, you know, sometimes it's not, it's not good when they just say, hey, do that, but here are all the mandates you have to follow, and we're not gonna give you all this extra funding, but you gotta put it in there. Now we give you all this extra money, when really it was in grants, and now it's all in one funding, and it's the same amount of money. So that's what we've got to be careful for.
Does that TESA, is that for underprivileged children?
No, it's the new, it's the new.
Replacing BEP.
It's the new BEP. Yeah, it'll replace BEP. Yep.
Did you want to talk about the retreat?
That's, well, that was under you, but I can talk about it.
Oh, well, I didn't write it down, so I forgot. We'll talk about that then.
Yeah, we, we need to schedule the retreat. We have two dates, either February the 24th and 25th, or February the 17th and 18th. On a Friday night and a Saturday morning. And decide where all you want to have it.
I like where we're going. Because I like, Teresa, I like to go home at night. Is that John Asher? Yeah. If, if Scott will reach out to Tammy at TSBA, will you do that?
See, is there any, has anybody got any different, I don't know if the, the 17th and 18th, that's, I'm not sure where everybody's doing Valentine's Day, if they're doing it the weekend before or the weekend after.
That shouldn't happen.
It's on a Tuesday, it's on a Tuesday. 14th's on a Tuesday.
I have to check my calendar on that one.
You'll have to check your calendar.
Yeah.
So, but we, if you will just send Pam an email, and if, if there's one of those dates that really doesn't have with you, then we'll try to get them set, because we want to get them set, because those fill up pretty fast.
17, 18, or 24, 25 of February.
Or if we had to, we could go to, ooh, let me, let me, 17, 18, 24, 25. Yeah, I don't know if y'all want to go into March or not. I'd rather, we really need it done earlier there, because we can get a budget and everything passed, because we've got to start having the budget across by about the 15th of March, I think.
Oh, and, and another thing on that is, this does not, Scott's heard this, and Teresa did, this does not fulfill the requirements for the seven hours. Have you heard that, Scott?
No, I hadn't heard that.
It does not.
Unless we, unless y'all do something like we did last year, even the joint venture.
A joint venture does, it doesn't count as a, as a, as a mandatory anymore.
Oh, really? They took that out?
Now, summer law did. You remember that?
Summer law counted for what?
For the, for the seven hours.
So do we need, do we need?
Well, there's so many opportunities on that calendar that.
Do we need TESA to be here? TSB to be here, or we just plan it ourselves?
Either way.
Now that's, oh, oh, well, no, that's when we do the evaluation, do, do your evaluation and.
Yeah, a lot of that we can do ourselves.
Well, if the joint venture doesn't count for anything anymore, do we really need to do that?
We can just call it a retreat.
Yeah.
And not do the.
And not have them there.
And not involve TSB.
The only thing is, they tally, they tally up your evaluation, but.
No, we usually.
It's always such a close vote.
Wade usually does that for us.
Yes, he sure does.
Now, they do your aisle, so they do, they do your aisle.
The board self-evaluation.
The board self-evaluation, but we could still get that and go over it.
Yeah, we can.
That's something to think about.
Yeah, okay. We'll, we'll talk about that.
Yep.
We've got a little bit of time.
Yep.
It'll be here before we know it, but we have.
Yes.
All right. So that was it.
Yep, that was it.
Between yours and mine. Committee reports, while you're talking, the Budget Committee.
Okay, the Budget Committee met Monday night, and had these, Dr. Perry, you want to talk about any of these?
We had, we had really, 1A through 1D were appropriations. The only one that was out of the general purpose school budget was the funds from special ed service for fees to take care of stipends for our department chairs and crisis management for $150,000. The other three were just really appropriating grants, and the last one was to appropriate the best schools appreciation check for preschool for $100.
Second.
Motion to approve appropriations, 1A through 1D. And the second, right? Any other discussion? Roll call.
All right. Mr. Burrow?
Aye.
Mr. Gillam Waters?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. McCainy?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Langdeberg?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Transfers? Transfers?
You know, the transfer.
And the transfers, we had three, 2A through 2C. They were all really and truly just reflections of trying to make sure that our budget is what was approved by the state. As you know, the federal grants have to go in so early that as the year goes on, they have to change those. And the last 1C was just to pay for membership dues in the Tennessee Head Start Association.
So moved, we approve.
Second. Motion, second to approve transfers 2A through 2C. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. That is done. Action items, it's December.
Wait a minute.
Oh, policy, I'm sorry. I was sitting there thinking that.
You skipped me, Scott.
I was thinking you didn't have anything to report, but I guess you, you made.
And I apologize that I don't have it on the board. You don't realize how much you miss somebody till they're, till they're gone. And Pam has been really sick this way. And I have been, I have been like a chicken with my head cut off trying to get these things done. So I did put you a copy of the board, of the board policy on your.
Yep.
Yep. Sorry, Ms. Williams, the Policy Committee.
Policy Committee did meet on Monday night, and we, we had two policies up for discussion, and we spent quite a bit of time discussing appeals too, and appearances before the board. But we didn't, we didn't motion to table. We just decided to put it off until Dr. Perry has a chance to work with some folks. And that will come back at the next meeting, hopefully. So that's, that policy. Now, we have a new, newly amended policy, I guess I would say. Orientation dash slash New Teacher Institute that Teresa Portwood presented. And it's, it's got a, had a few changes that was not in our current policy that we have had for years. So, do I need to read it, or?
No.
I don't, unless anybody wants it.
They don't wanna hear.
Don't wanna hear. So the committee recommended approval on first reading, and I so moved.
Second.
Motion, second to approve 5.107 on first reading. Any other discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. It's done.
That takes your policy.
We'll finish that up next month. Thank you. Now, we have action items. Sorry, I'm trying to get home.
You're just trying to go home.
That's it, that's it. December means we're approving tenure, so we have the tenure list that you all have seen. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion, we approve the presented tenure list for 2022.
Second.
Motion, the second to approve the list that is before you. Any discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. That is done. Next item is the resolution that we added to the agenda. This is the prop, purchase of the property adjacent to Andersonville Elementary. Guess we, well, therefore be resolved, it gives the location.
The cost, and you've already appropriated all the money. This just, this really just allows the chairman and the director's schools to sign at closing.
Yeah, the closing hasn't happened yet, has it?
No, no, no.
Closing hasn't happened.
Hasn't happened yet.
I'm getting off track.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. There's a motion, the second to approve the resolution purchasing the property at Andersonville Elementary. Any other discussion?
This is something that's been needed for a number of years. I'm glad Dr. Perry was able to.
Yes.
Whatever.
We're, we're gonna make sure that is, that, that yes.
Yeah, it's, it's been a funny.
Yes.
All right. Any others discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. That is done. You don't have anybody to present to.
I know.
But you can present it.
And all those Christmas cards, nobody here can do it.
Ms. Portwood has a presentation. We can at least thank people on television.
Well, Pam, if you're watching, Merry Christmas. Have your card for you.
Is she watching? She's making sure we get it right.
Yes, she makes sure I don't screw up too bad.
Well, I was wondering who's taking notes. Surely, she's not doing that at home.
Hope she feels better soon.
But we have your Christmas card. I'll leave it with Dr. Perry. And then we have Christmas cards for our two students, school board members, and neither of them are here. Do y'all want your money back?
I will give those, we'll give, we'll give those to Mr. Snyder.
There you go.
We'll give those to Mr. Snyder, and he can go out to the two schools.
Is he well, is he well enough to do that?
Will you do that, Mr. Snyder?
Yep.
Thank you.
He'll do that.
Oh, I knew it was back there.
All right. So the last item is to wish everybody the happiest holiday seasons and Happy New Year, and to all a good night, right?
That's exactly right. We are done.
Oh, and the flowers, who presented the flowers?
Oh, the flowers came from, from who?
They came from Clinton High School.
And ACCTC. So get you one or two, or however many you want.
They're pretty.
All right. And that's Joe giving us good stuff.
Eric?
Thank you, same here too.
What's my shirt you wear?
Large, usually.
Well, I have something to make your.